The November 6th, Monona City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Kour.
Here.
Alder Spate.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Alder Kitzler.
Here.
Alder Moore.
Here.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
All their home requests will be arriving later.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the October 16th and October 25th meetings? Can we vote on those at the same time?
Yes.
A move approval. Second?
Any corrections or additions? All in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have an appearance tonight. Lucas Olson from the Wisconsin DNR presenting the city of Monona as an official Bird City, Wisconsin.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Mary, for the introduction. I restate, I am Lucas Olson. I work for the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, but I'm also a steering committee member for Bird City, Wisconsin. I am pleased to be here to salute the city of Monona, its public officials, and its conservation-minded residents for your efforts to make this community a better place for birds and people. Monona is one of an incredible 107 Bird City, Wisconsin communities in just the eighth year of this innovative undertaking. Lot along the Tree City USA program, the Bird City application under which Monona is being honored today required meeting criteria across five categories: habitat creation and protection, community forest management, limiting threats to birds, public education, and recognition of International Migratory Bird Day. I am happy to announce that we have updated our application to include another category: energy and sustainability, and a number of new criteria that you can meet to further bolster Monona's conservation reputation. I did notice on the Google images, the nice solar panels on top of this building, Bravo, Monona. But anyways, I digress. All of the criteria that you met to bring me here today remain on the application, so your current Bird City status is not in jeopardy due to the new application. The new application also kept the elite level of recognition of high flyer for those communities that truly go above and beyond in the name of creating healthy communities that make birds, wildlife, and human health and well-being a part of their planning. Bird City, Wisconsin's approach is to encourage bird protection and public education on as many fronts as possible. Some specific actions that can be taken are protecting and creating habitat and removing urban threats like keeping your cats inside and working to reduce barrel cat populations. On a side note, did you know that cats kill 2.4 billion birds in the United States every year? This is 10 to 20 percent of all birds in the United States, a number so large that if you counted, started counting right now, you would spend 76 years in 19 days counting before you reached it. Being a green community with nice green space benefits mental health, not to mention the positive relationship between both tree cover and bird diversity and average home price. The more in-depth economics of birding might surprise you. Every year, the U.S. birdwatching industry has a total output of $107 billion and accounts for over 650,000 jobs. This is a significant amount of money, much of which is up for grabs in Wisconsin. Our state ranks second in the country in terms of percentage of people interested in birds. About 33 percent of our population, which is 1.9 million people, can be considered bird watchers in this state. As I hope everyone here knows, there are a number of good things happening in Monona. One of the most impressive things about Monona is the amount of protected habitat in your community, including the Monona Wetland Conservancy and the natural areas along Lake Monona, the Yaha River, and Upper Mud Lake, as well as the city's ongoing effort to improve the habitat at Woodland Park. I also commend you for the steps that you take to manage it, to benefit birds, and sincerely hope that your new Bird City status will provide an impetus to redouble your efforts as habitat protection and creation are critical for bird conservation. Monona also clearly takes advantage of many opportunities that you have to educate people about the natural world through organizations like the Alto Leopold Center, numerous educational bird counts such as Great Backyard Bird Count, Christmas Bird Count, and the Sand Hill Crane Count, and your new International Migratory Bird Day. We commend you for these actions and you take, we commend, excuse me, we commend you for the actions you take and encourage you to use Bird City, Wisconsin, and our soon-to-be-launched new website as a source of new resources and inspiration for education that you can provide to your residents and visitors. Bird City is here in all of your conservation and education efforts, so please do not hesitate to ask for advice or resources. It is our hope that we will see Monona's application for high flyer status in the next few years. I'm here today not only to present you with your award and trumpet your achievements, but also to say a public thank you to the citizens of Monona who worked together to protect birds and educate people, but I'd also especially like to thank Jacob Anderson, Director of Parks and Recreation, Missy Kozowski, Aquatic Director and Recreation Supervisor, Mary, excuse me, Mayor, Mayor O'Connor, Peter McKeever, Paul Newelder, Brian Schneider, Kara Erickson, the entire City Council, and everyone else who had a hand in your Bird City application for all the hard work you do to make Monona a bird-friendly community, and for all the effort that you put into showing Bird City, Wisconsin, everything that you have been up to. Bird City, Wisconsin showcases its recognition with street signs to be hung in your community, a flag, a plaque, and a copy of Owen Graham's Book of Words of Wisconsin, and conservation brochures for you to hand out to your citizens. These items help trumpet your conservation successes while promoting strategies for coordinated, far-reaching, and bird-centered conservation activities in the future. Please remember that we are always here to work with your citizens, staff, and elected officials to help you become a community that is even healthier for both birds and people, and maybe a high flyer in the future. I sincerely hope that Bird City's relationship with the city of Monona is sustained and enhanced for years to come. Thank you very much, and let's hear for Bird City, Monona.
that's not related to the public hearing regarding the operating budget. If anyone else would like to make an appearance, please fill out one of these slips if you haven't already. So I guess the other appearance then would be Peter McKeever wanting to speak about the dark stores legislation.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And I want to thank you for the support for the Bird City application. Doug Wood, in particular, contributed a lot of information to the application that made it more solid and more successful, and I appreciate all the help that all of you gave us. Several years ago, Walgreens sued the city of Madison alleging that their property taxes were too high. The Wisconsin Supreme Court ended up agreeing with Walgreens after several rounds of litigation. Without getting into the legal details about how, what it was all about in terms of the assessment, suffice it to say that the legislature now has before it a couple of bills that would resolve this problem. As you know, Walmart has sued Monona to reduce its property taxes, and I don't remember the number, several hundred thousand dollars. The impact would be significant for local homeowners and for local businesses. I had a conversation some weeks ago with Alderman Kitzler, and I sat down with local resident Theresa Rademacher, and we got to thinking, what could we do in Monona to help get this legislation through the State Senate and through the Assembly? We were hoping that it would be voted on tomorrow in the State Senate, but it's not on the calendar. We're told that Wisconsin Manufacturers and Commerce is aggressively opposing this legislation. What we've done is we've organized a forum with Senator Mark Miller for November 16th, 7 o'clock in the evening, here in the community center, to have him come and talk about what the status of the issue is, what can be done, and what we can do here in Monona to help educate the public about the significance of this issue and get the word out to the rest of the state, as well as what we can do to help get it through the legislature. It's still got to go through the Assembly. There are two bills. They have support from the committees in the State Senate, and according to a notice that the mayor sent to me today from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, 16 out of 17 Republican senators support the legislation, but for some reason, they're not getting it to a vote. We know what the reason is, Wisconsin Manufacturers and Commerce. Well, I just wanted to make you aware of this forum that's coming up. We just were able to locate or finalize a location today, so Theresa and I are going to get out some publicity on it, a press release, try and get the word out. We've invited the League of Wisconsin Municipalities to come and participate. At this point, it doesn't look like they're going to be able to, but we'll keep leaning on them, and I think Alderman Kitzler is going to give them a push if he can, what I understood from an email today. So the reason, the reason I came was just to let you all know that and to let the public know that this forum's going to happen on the 16th, 7 o'clock, in the community center. We would like to have the public come out, hear what Senator Miller's got to say, and see what we can do as residents of Monona to get it passed, not just for the benefit of Monona, but for the benefit of communities across the state. Because if Walmart wins the lawsuit here, you can bet that other big-box stores, Menards and others, Staples and others, are going to follow suit, not just here, but across the state, in other places. It's a significant issue. I personally have a problem with big businesses, corporations, pawning their taxes off on residents instead of picking up their fair share of the bill. Somehow seems to me they feel or realize that the more money the consumers have in their pockets, the more money they can spend at their stores, but that doesn't seem to register with how they think about things. So, thank you for the time, and join us on the 16th of November, and we'll have a conversation with Senator Miller and see if we can get something done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that closes the appearance section. Next is our public hearing portion of the meeting. This is to receive public input regarding the proposed 2018 operating budget, and I have several people who have, I would just like to register in favor of Amendment Three, which is for the additional firefighter paramedic position. It doesn't look like anyone has actually registered to speak, so. The people who have registered in favor of it are Brian Swetler, 1995 Lewis Street Cross Plains, Alex Rosnick, 312 Skyland Way Deerfield, Brian Hillebrand, 2107 Jovan Street Cross Plains, Brandon Cornell, 825 Calisto Drive Madison, Chris Vernig, 2013 Carver Street, I'm assuming that's Madison, Lawrence Reed, 5602 Winicle Road, Monona, and Dan Eklaff, 5408 McKenna Road, Monona. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in the public hearing? Okay, then I'll declare the, I guess I won't use my gavel. The public hearing closed. We will move on to Item F, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. There is no unfinished business. Item G2, under new business to a consideration of Resolution 17-11-2223, adopting the 2018 operating budget and establishing a tax levy. We will be going through the individual amendments that have been put forth about, for amendments to the budget. We will not be voting on these tonight, however, we will be voting on these at our next meeting on the 20th of November. So, number one, regarding transportation aid, Mr. Houttaker.
Yeah, I have it in front of me. I passed out because that one's, correction, I made this, we talked about last time, change for the money the state put into this fund, which helped us. So I, what I put in there, what I put is on your front of you tonight is what it's going to look like after that amendment, so it should be a sheet that has like this. If you go to the third page, everybody's on the same page, what it's going to look like after this amendment, to hand out from tonight. So page 20, the last page, I circled it, so the law base is 260,000. After this amendment, it would be under the limit by 105,800. So, that's after this amendment happens, much of the under, so we're all on the same page on that.
Does anyone have any questions for Mark? I guess not, thank you. Second Amendment, gypsy moth spray program eliminating 25,000 because the city is not qualified for the program in 2018, sponsored by Alder Kitzler. Any?
Self-explanatory, if there's questions.
You might want to explain this, I don't know if Mr. Stefani would like to come up and explain about this
Why we're not?
special wasp that has moved into, they think has moved into Monona and is apparently destroying some of the gypsy moths?
That's correct, Mayor. We attended a training session in early September with the DNR in Dane County, at the Dane County offices. I'm not sure quite how long ago this wasp was introduced in Wisconsin, but it was brought here specifically to kill the gypsy moth larvae, and Wisconsin has started seeing signs that this wasp is here doing its job, and we see it in Monona now. And when our forester was out doing the colony counts the past few weeks, we have seen, he has seen the effects of the wasp. And a healthy egg mass has a certain color to it, and the dead egg mass has an off-white color with holes in it. And the holes in the egg mass indicate that the wasp has been there sucking the life out of the eggs, so to speak. And the wasp also lays eggs on the caterpillar, which will kill the caterpillar, but the larvae from the wasp continue to live off the caterpillar. So from there, the wasp does its job, and that's exactly what Mike has seen in our city. He visited every address that was on the list that we had, including our hotspots from previous years. So, that's what we're seeing.
Which is great news unless the wasp turns out to be something
Yeah.
Does something else dreadful.
Yeah.
So hopefully, long-term
That's why we don't qualify.
That takes care of our problem, and that's good.
Yeah.
So, we don't qualify because of this other, the wasp is doing its work, and we just don't have the volume? Is it a volume-based thing?
Yep, we do not meet the egg mass count. There's a number of criteria that we would have to meet, and we fall below in every category again, so. But the wasp, I believe, is what has helped us get there, or I guess we're not spraying this year.
Okay.
So.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Alder Wood?
Yeah, the, it's, so you're reducing the amount of fund balance applied instead of, was that how that was going to be paid for?
Yeah, it was eventually, we put in the three things where the
That was on that, okay.
That was one of the three, the IT for that training, and then for study with the sign study
Right.
The sign consultant, and then this one. So that makes up the 60, the amount.
Next amendment, number three, to add one full-time firefighter/paramedic staff position, put forward by Alders Kitzler, Moore, and Kour. Who would like to speak?
I guess I'll kick it off, and then I'll keep it short, and then see what I need to add afterwards, but, I mean, so, you know, just to be brief, there was a study done a number of years ago recommending for at least three additional full-time personnel, two of which have been hired, this would be the third. I think, you know, last year and then this year, there's been growing examples of the need for an additional full-time firefighter to man both the engine and the ambulance. And so, you know, just basically, I think with the statistics, we're starting to see the growing age of our population generally, you know, there's a need for it, and certainly, you know, as I personally think of our family members that live in Monona, you know, I would hate to think that, you know, one of my family members would be the example of the 23-minute or so wait, so. That's why I propose this, and is one of the sponsors of it, and why I support it.
Alder Kour, did you?
I would just add that, you know, we've had lots of trouble maintaining staffing levels. We've tried other options, paid-on-call program, and those haven't met the needs that we have in current staffing, and so this would be something much more consistent and reliable in terms of staffing, and I think that that's a move we need to make to ensure the services are community needs.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I would just, I would just add that, you know, while there's certainly, I think we have a record of using our tax dollars wisely, and we have lots of needs, many more needs than we can usually fund, you know, I can't think of anything higher than our public safety and security, both in terms of hiring police, so I think they certainly came to the top of my list for that reason.
Okay. Anyone else? Alder Wood?
Yeah. So the total amount is 83,720. Is that to fund the position for the full year? 12 months, somebody?
Yeah, I believe so. I was looking to, Mark, to reconfirm, but this is for the full year.
This is starting as a 1-1, 2018.
Yeah, so that's probably, we don't need the full amount, I guess.
Right.
Okay. Something on that, and I had another question.
Yeah, on top of that there, one of the things that wasn't put in there is the clothing allowance for another full-time firefighter/paramedic, which is $400. And currently, the reason I was late was we were at, I was at Police and Fire Commission meeting where we did do interviews for establishing an eligibility list, which we now have an eligibility list for firefighter/paramedic. So if the funding goes through, we're able to hire as quickly as the funding is put forth, so.
Okay.
Wait, they're approving this position? Or starting the process?
They, we did, we've already done a process where we now have a list established. We try to have a list established in case someone does leave
Okay.
Gets hired somewhere else.
That's been going on for a while, right?
Yes, yep. We try to have a list established so that we can, if there is a vacancy open, we can fill it as quickly as possible.
Okay.
And this
But it still wouldn't be January 1st.
Could be. It's up to you guys.
Yeah.
This was approved in public safety to begin with, right? It was part of the original budget request, but we didn't have
Correct.
funding available
Yep.
at the time that I was first putting together the budget, so.
Correct.
Are there any other comments?
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't want to belabor this tonight because we can belabor it next time, but I would, I guess, quibble with the notion that we, that there was a study done of the staffing needs. There was sort of an ad hoc committee that met three or four times about four years ago, I think it was.
There was an ad hoc committee that was done in, I'd have to actually go back and look at
Something like that.
Yeah.
That came up with a recommendation that was primarily made up of firefighters and EMTs. So if you're going to rely a lot on that, I think you
It had more than firefighters and EMTs.
More than that, yeah, but well, if we had
The mayor was on it.
15 minutes?
The alder, there was an alder.
As far as I was told, it was appointed by the mayor, too, so they were the ones that were controlling the membership.
Yeah, well, I don't care who it was, I mean, if the mayor appointed it, it's still, well, anyway, I think it might be helpful to have a little more, because that was not a study, or at least not what I consider a study. It was, you know, an ad hoc committee getting data and making a recommendation. So I don't know if there's minutes available for that, because I know one time, the minutes
I did have Scott put together some minutes when I was first
Yeah.
We were thinking about fire department staffing in general, and I can get those too, if you'd like them.
Yeah.
Some of them are pretty sketchy, but I agree with
Yeah, it's kind of a notion that there's a study, and it's sort of got this momentum, and then the other thing, and I'll stop, is I think probably then all the alders know this, but just for the benefit possibly of the newer alders, that we have added two full-time positions in the last three budgets, plus the money that we added in the POP and the paid-on-call program. So, we have not been ignoring the public safety needs in the last three budgets, so.
Jim?
I just wanted to address kind of the big picture. I'm currently undecided on the value of this particular amendment, and my reasoning is not that I doubt or challenge the need for another firefighter and EMT. I also don't doubt or challenge the need for another police officer. I think that there are other needs within the city at this time, and so I think the challenge we have as a city council is to decide exactly, you know, what need are we going to address? Now, it's true that you are the only, you know, department that's currently requesting another person. I mean, I could be wrong on this, and I'm sure there'd be people that would correct me here in the room, but I don't think the police department or the chief has asked for another officer, though it's widely known that they could certainly benefit from that help. I know that Parks and Rec at some point will probably need a facilities manager for the growing number of park facilities that we have in the city. I think it's widely believed that the city could use a full-time marketing person to help with a lot of public outreach that is currently not being done, or it's being done at the expense of other services that department heads can't tend to because they're updating their social media pages and things like that. We've at times not had a dispatcher or had full funding of the dispatch department, and I asked Mark, you know, the city finance director, to kind of put together a list of all of the positions that have been discussed for the city, and if we were to try to add all six or seven of those, because actually ultimately you're wanting, this is the, this is the third of four full-time hires you hope to achieve for the fire department, correct?
Correct.
So, eventually, we'll be asked here in short order for another fire EMT, and again, I'm not, I'm not challenging your need for this person. I, I want to be clear. But there are seven people that the city really could benefit from hiring right now at an annual cost at current salary and benefits of over a half million dollars. The totals that I think Mark had sent out to us are $533,782 for those seven positions. Now, obviously, the city cannot add a half a million dollars in annual recurring expenses to the budget, and we do have the ability to add one or possibly two of these positions this year if we really stretch things and we dip into our reserves and we really put the city in a, in a tight spot moving forward. But I am just raising this issue because I think we have to be very clear-eyed about what we add. I do want to commend you, Chief, for running a really tight ship, and I don't say that at the expense of any other committee in the city, but we consistently see the fire department come in below budget when we're reviewing things here in the city. So I don't want to miss the opportunity to commend you for that and for all the things you have done to show that you're worthy of managing this department very well. So again, I just want to raise this as something for us to talk about, because at the end of the day, when we create one position the end of the day, when we create one position, it's largely assumed we're going to keep that position from year after year. I mean, that's why we would ask for it, because it's an ongoing need. It's not a short-term need. And so, other things will have to be sacrificed potentially in future years if the financial health of the city does not continue to flourish as well as it has over the last ten years or so. So, I'm going to keep an open mind about this particular request, and I'm not going to ask for funding for any of these other positions for this year's budget, but I just want us to be mindful of what it means when we add another person to city staff, so. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Alder Holmquist, knowing he might not be here, had sent some comments that he'd asked me to share. He said, "I support overall. We have been holding off, and I believe we are now at the point where we need to invest in this additional staff. Some of this was also due to how, over time, we shifted Chief Sullivan's job to more administration and less available, he's less available for day-to-day services. I'm not suggesting we go back to that, that's just an observation," and that's from Alderman Holmquist, who chairs the Public Safety Committee, so. Anything else? April?
Just a question. Could you remind me again, would there be any cost offset from paid-on-premise, paid-on-call, overtime, all that?
I was just going to bring up that, so revenues, increase in revenues for EMS billing is $20,000 for 2018 over 2017. So, we've increased the revenues by $20,000. Two percent fire dues have increased by $4,800. So, that's $24,800, so almost $25,000 in increased revenues that go to help support this and the rest of the budget. Budget savings, we talk about, we reduced the intern program, that's $9,500 on the EMS side, $6,600 on the fire side. We reduced the paid-on-call by $15,000. We reduced the paid-on-premise by $15,000. That's a reduction in the, the two operating budgets by $51,000. When you take that $51,000 reduction plus the increase of $24,800, that comes out to $75,900 in either reductions or, and revenue increases. So, that, I mean, right there, that almost funds the whole position. That being said, there have been increases, other portions of the budget, increases for wages, that type of stuff. So, I don't think that that whole $75,000 is, you know, going towards that position. It's used for other things, but there is, with the increase in revenues and the reduction to those programs, it almost funds the whole position, so.
Mark?
I would argue the savings, I, for the paid-on-premise and paid-on-call, it's a net wash, so it's really not a savings because you had your fund balance, you applied and you had the reduction, so it's a zero effect there. So, it's not really a savings because you're saving, not using fund balance on the other side, so there's kind of a wash on that one.
Andrew?
Sorry, clarification. I know last year we used for paid-on-premise, fund balance, so we use fund balance for the paid-on-call, too? I thought that was out of the operating side of it.
It was, it, with the two programs, it's easiest to say, with the two programs, we were going to utilize $35,000 out of the fund balance.
Correct.
So, this is the $35,000. If we would have utilized it, if we would have used it, we would have had to re-budget for it. So, there's a possibility that we would have had to budget for that $35,000, but like Mark said, it's kind of a, kind of a wash because we didn't end up pulling it out of the fund balance. So, our fund balance, the ambulance fund balance, which is different than the city's fund balance, is staying at the same depending on what increase, what revenues we have over the revenues in the EMS for this year.
And you didn't use it basically because not enough volunteers-
Correct.
-volunteered to participate in those programs.
Correct.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is amendment number four, to hire a highly qualified consultant to conduct communications needs assessment with prioritized recommendations for the future that would not only address gaps, but enable us to be far more proactive, efficient, and effective in communications and marketing, and this is put forth by Alders Moore and Coeur.
I would just say that we, we attached with this amendment some of what we think are the goals of such a, eventually of having a communications and marketing manager for the city, but this would be a first step in that direction, recognizing budget constraints. And in addition to the background materials, I would just say that, you know, we're concerned in educated and informed electorate is a strong electorate, and, and that, that there, that there are numerous big, particularly important coming up over the next five years and the things that we're engaged in over the next five years, with the Ahara Commons project, which is going to be going on for multiple years, with major improvements to some of our biggest parks, with issues like the dark store legislation that we were just talking about, and with, with the city facilities that we're talking about needing renovating or potentially even new facilities in some cases, engaging our public, engaging our residents, and involving them and enlisting their support in a variety of different ways, informing them, keeping them informed are really critical. And, and so, having this kind of a needs assessment as a first step to then be able to, based on the needs assessment, to know more clearly than next year, let's say, if we were to be able to find money to hire a full-time professional or even half-time professional to be this marketing and communications person. Just think that it's, it's a step in a direction that we really, and as Alder Spade just spoke to, something that the city really needs. And so, and, and just even the last couple of weeks, I mean, this last, you know, on the community herald this last week, there was an article about Ahara Commons, what's going on there, that did obviously put the city in a very positive light. And, and the week before that, there was something about things that communities in the area were doing around keeping the lakes clean, and the town of Dunn was mentioned, and the town of Sun Prairie was mentioned, and there was no mention of Manona whatsoever, even though we haven't adopted a drain program. So, it's kind of a perfect example of a communications professional down the road would, would help us be able to anticipate that, help us marshal community support when it's needed, and most important, engage with the community in, in issues that are of import to us. So, again, this is a first step. The $18,000 that we've budgeted or that we're requesting is based on what I know, being an independent consultant myself, I'm not a communications consultant, but I, having been a consultant for seventeen years, independent consultant for seventeen years, I have a pretty good idea of, and having done many needs assessments of other varieties, I have a pretty good idea of, of what something that, like that would run, and so, hence, hence the, hence the request.
Any questions? Or Alder Coeur, did you want to?
I just would add that when I moved to Manona, I kind of struggled trying to figure out what was going on, how to get information about the city, and I spent three years, I still struggle, and I feel pretty connected to the city, being a councilwoman. And so, I really feel like this is a, a strong need. We put in the budget for a consultant at this point, you know, hopefully, we can find funds later on for a full-time person, half-time person, something more permanent. As Nancy said, we're looking at some big initiatives down the road that would really need some cohesive marketing and essentially engaging the community, and the way to do that is to get them involved and kind of beat them over the head with information. I would say that I know that there may be some concerns about spending this much money when the budget is as tight as it is. I think that putting this money in, we could find that we have a lot of the resources available to us within staff that we currently have, and it would be somebody from the outside saying that, you know, we can shift duties and, you know, meet some of our needs that we're not currently meeting now, but I think it's important to bring someone in from the outside to do that. I think that it's a different perspective.
Comments?
Is there any reason you decided, did you think about taking this from fund balance rather than putting it on the property tax roll?
I did not.
So, I would think that'd be something we could consider since it's a one-time expenditure. I, again, have more comments from Alderman Holmquist. His question was, "Where did the number come from?" I think you explained that, and his other comment was, "Will, will we be prepared to take action with the recommendations adding staff versus recommendations on ways to do better with what we have?" So, I imagine he'll raise those again at our next meeting.
I would just say, I would just say in response to that, that, you know, right now, a lot of our marketing and communications, to the extent that it exists, is happening under the category of other duties as assigned. And while that might appropriate for a few of the staff members, I think it's safe to say that, you know, a significant number of the staff members, it's not necessarily in their bailiwick, and to take them away from their other duties, duties that are just as important or probably more important for, you know, because it's the thing that they were hired for, to be doing things like updating the website or writing a press release or trying to put together a flyer or a poster or something like that is, you know, I just don't think it's a wise use of resources. So, I hope that certainly, based on this study, next year, as Alderman Coeur said, that we're prepared to, to obdianee because I think our needs in this area, and we've, you know, particularly in light of the kind of big projects that we're talking about. I mean, you know, the Fire Chief sent us an article as one example a few months ago around some important things to keep in mind when we're talking about new public safety facilities, and one of the things that was brought out in that article, one of the key things that was brought out in the article was the importance of marshaling community support around whatever it is that you're going to do, and that's inevitable with everything, really, that we, we do as a council. So, you know, I think it's, again, this is an important first step. And I should say, too, that, that April did reach out to a couple of other smaller communities that have already hired communications personnel, Whitewater and River Falls, and, and to, one of the questions that she asked was, you know, are there any kind of takeaways or any lessons learned? And one of the things that was said was from, I believe it was the person at, at River Falls said, "I wish I had hired this person sooner," and way more bang for the buck and much more helpful to accomplish connections to the community, you know, so.
Alder Spade?
Just two things I want to mention. One is, I think, your point about the fund balance, I mean, that's something as a council that we'll have to decide on that, and for the, you know, newer folks, I mean, we decide kind of as we're wrapping up deliberations on the budget at our next meeting, you know, how much money, if any, we want to take from the fund balance and apply to the current budget. And so, it doesn't matter, I mean, we could choose to take $100,000 from the fund balance next time we meet, if that's what we choose, and apply it, and that will reduce the property tax levy. But I, you know, I think that that's a decision we should make based on the merits of where we want the fund balance to be, and this, whether we spend money on something should be based on whether or not it's a good thing to spend money on, you know? So, I mean, I don't, I'm not questioning either, I'm just saying they're kind of separate questions, and we'll definitely have the ability, if we want, to transfer some fund The other thing I was going to ask about, and I don't know the answer to this, but we have created this new hotel tax-related marketing board, and I'm curious to know to what extent, potentially in the future, someone who helps to market the city is a legitimate expense for that, you know, for the revenues from that tax potentially, and I don't know the answer to that, it's a very new thing, but.
April?
I guess that's one of the things we would have to tangle through very early on is, you know, there's communication, and then there's communications. So, I mean, we have things like emergency communication where you should have someone who's a trained public information officer, you know, through FEMA. You've got, you know, what the hotel tax is trying to accomplish, which is bringing in visitors to the city who are going to stay overnight in a hotel, which is different than telling somebody where to put their car in a snow emergency, so.
Well, right, but I think the point of this position, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're looking for someone to help with marketing the city.
Yes.
In some capacity, yeah.
Right.
Both, yeah, both, both the communication with residents as well as marketing the city, right? Distinguishing city and marketing the city, right?
But I think it's, you know, who would be best, you know, where would that best live is, you know, one of the things that we would need to answer through the questions. But, but right now, what we're gathering from the hotels is, you know, even the hotels are not really marketing themselves or this city as a place, you know, to come and stay, come and visit, so it's just not happening right now.
Okay. Alder Coeur?
Yeah, I would argue that Manona needs a cohesive voice. I don't really feel like we've got a strong voice. We have a lot to offer, and so, I could see this position doing twofold. It could be the, the internal communications, it could be, you know, the day-to-day communications, but I also could see us utilizing some of those hotel funds to fund a larger initiative in terms of bringing people to Manona and establishing a voice and a marketing brand for Manona.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We'll go on to the final amendment, number five, proposed by Alder Kitzler, to add $20,000 from the fund balance for a cost study to provide city employees, what it would cost to provide city employees paid family leave for things like birth, adoption, et cetera, of a child, and paid family care, personal or family serious illness. Alder Kitzler?
Perfect, thanks. So, yeah, as she said, it covers the cost of potentially contracting with someone to review policies and cost projections. There's two individuals I've been in touch with. One, as you might have read, Dane County is proposing parental leave for their employees. So, I've been in touch with their finance people and actually talked through how they created a cost modeling, and I've worked with Leah and Mark on that. So, I, I don't necessarily think we need to hire somebody for that with, kind of coupled with the fact that I've also been in touch with somebody at UW, you know, Thinking of University project, I reached out to Jason Vargo to see if he had any recommendations, and then I got connected to somebody from, I forget what the actual acronym stands for, but it's called COWS, and what they do is they work with municipalities to actually implement policies and practices, and I've been in touch with them, and they're very eager to partner, potentially partner with the city on looking at what, you know, exactly the policies are and what the cost implications would be. So, the, the goal is, again, this would be from the fund balance, you know, reiterate, I worked, well, I should say, I worked with Mark to provide a projection. He contacted a few other municipalities and some people that would potentially be able to figure out cost projections, and this was at the high end of the estimates. Since it's fund balance, hopefully, we won't use it all, and I'm actually hoping we might not use any of it. So, we're hoping to do, or I should say, I'm hoping to do the study and kind of put together- So we're hoping to do, or I should say, I'm hoping to do the study and kind of put together a formal proposal for 2019 implementation. You know, so kind of just the narrative behind it, a lot of people say putting together a budget reflects your values. One of my values is work-life balance. I want our city employees to know that they're valued and that they should take the time to be with their family, whether it's in serious illness or, you know, the adoption of a child, for example. And I don't want our employees to necessarily drain their vacation and sick time. You know, and the larger caveat is there's a lot of devil in the details of what the policy is, whether it's full play, whether they have to take a certain amount. So those are things that I want to take the next year to look at and then formally propose in 2019. And again, you know, to get back on my soapbox, I think Manona can be an example. We're small enough that we can try things, we can adapt, we can see what works, but I think Manona can be an example to other municipalities, whether around the state or the country. You know, oftentimes I hear we should be the Portland of the, you know, the Midwest, but I want people to start saying, you know, we could be the Manona of Louisiana or something of that sort. So, I mean, I guess the last thing I'll say is all in practicality, one of the things that opened my eyes is you look at some of our employees that leave, they leave to other municipalities, even in Dane County. And we can't necessarily match the salaries, but I think we can provide, you know, a world-class benefits package that other municipalities don't. And as far as I know, aside from potentially Dane County coming up, no other area municipality would offer such a thing. And I think it's, you know, I think it's something big, but maybe budgetarily, it's something small that we can provide our city employees. And I'm hoping to look at it in coming year with this fund and then hopefully, again, proposing it in 2019.
Before I ask if anybody else has comments, I meant to say initially that I, Alder Kitzler's brought this up to me several months ago, the question of starting a program or whatever. And I told him that I didn't want to pursue it further without having some idea of what the numbers might be, because when you start thinking about it, there are so many different angles to this and so many different, if we were to go with it, so many different routes we could go. So I think that's where the thought for doing a study is going. I also would say that I know the staff, Mark and Leah and April, have some concerns about it that we need to take into account. And we can either have them come to the next meeting and discuss those concerns, or if you'd like to meet with them individually, whichever. But I think, and certainly that's something also, depending on the outcome of the study, we can go into more depth about those concerns at that point, so...
Yeah, I've met with Leah and Mark, and I don't know if they have additional concerns since then that we met last Friday. You know, April, happy to talk. I think any concerns can be figured out next year too, so...
Anybody? Chad?
I just wanted to say that I fully support this amendment, and I guess I failed to respond to a couple of emails that Alder Kitzler had sent to me, because I too think that we should have strong and obvious values in our budget and in our policies as a community. And obviously, we have to be able to afford it to do it, but that's why this study, I think, is the right approach, so...
Alder Kur?
I would just say that I think it's pretty fiscally responsible to strive to retain employees. If we don't strive to retain employees, we're going to spend more and more training new people, trying to get people in. We've struggled with other departments keeping people in-house, they're going other places for better offers. You know, this is something we can offer that would help retain employees. I think that would be a benefit financially to the city in the long run.
Anyone else? Comments from Alder Holmquist? Again, wondering where the number came from. Said it, he said he thought it seemed like a lot of money to do this assessment, and then he wondered if it was something that CivMC might already do or would do. I don't know if anyone's looked at that as an option.
I don't know, I just took Mark's word for it, whoever he asked for an estimate.
I say we haven't looked for CivMC, but I know, just from my call, I called some audit firms who kind of do this, is consulting some other municipalities. What I found, it's in the, like Dane County, it's like there's very few communities in the state that are doing this, so it's really kind of new. So you don't see a lot of people doing it. CivMC might do it, but I don't know if they're really doing it. But I know a couple of firms I talked to, they're looking at doing it from a private sector, so they are starting to get into this. But it's really new, and so the things that Andrew was talking about with partnering with COWS and things like that are things that probably the best way to go right now. It is fairly new, so I guess we can check with them tomorrow to verify that. I don't think they've really worked with it.
Okay. I guess that takes care of the operating budget portion of the agenda. Next item up is item 2B, consideration of ordinance 11-17-692, amending chapter 18, section 17 of the Code of Ordinances related to sustainability, community membership put forth by the city administrator.
This was a request, and it's a very simple ordinance that would reduce the number of citizen members to the sustainability committee from eight to six citizen members. And really, the reason is just to reflect current active membership and to help avoid quorum problems. It was reduced in this last go-around with the codification, but it just seems that six is a more comfortable number for that. Chad, anything to add to that?
Well, so, and it would be six citizens plus the two Alders, so it is a total of eight people. I think it's, that does require five for a quorum, and that's, I think, a reasonable number for that committee. I've been on it for many years, and I don't see any reason. I think the problem with having too many people on a committee is you don't have a back bench. And, you know, a lot of people that want to be involved in sustainability have been on that committee, and we've had a lot of people, but it's hard to get them all together. So I definitely support this.
Anyone else, any questions? Okay. Next up, item 2C, consideration of resolution 17-11-2224, accepting a Dane County build grant and providing a local funding match put forth by the city administrator. This is something we would like to have approved tonight. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
Move to take this item out of order.
All in favor, say aye.
I think Alder Kur was the second.
Alder Kur was the second. All in favor of taking this out of order, say aye.
Aye.
Move to approve, says?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Little?
Dane County Build Committee has provided us with a $25,000 planning grant that we can apply towards our riverfront Park Plaza planning project. And maybe the best way to explain this is we have immediately following this item, a request to approve a $61,000 task order for this project. We could deduct $25,000 of city funds for that project by applying this grant. And essentially, this grant says that we accept the grant and we will provide our share, which is $25,000. So it's a 50-50 grant, but we'd have to spend 50 to get our maximum amount, if that makes sense.
At Finance and Personnel, we did slightly recommend changing this in the third paragraph by changing it to, just dropping the word, or the 50% number, and just providing a local funding match of $25,000. So I assume you probably should make a motion if you do want to make that adjustment. I thought it made it a little less clear.
Can I accept it as a friendly amendment, or do I have to actually propose it?
I can't really make an amendment.
Oh.
Whoever moved in second would have to agree with it. That's a friendly amendment.
I would... From Finance and Personnel, do you want to recommend the amendment?
That's all we did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I accept it.
I accept it as well.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item is also something that is on the agenda for immediate approval, item 2D, I'm sorry, item G, 2D, consideration of resolution 17-11-2225, approving agreement with Vandewall and Associates and Strand Associates for services related to the planning of a public space Park Plaza for the riverfront redevelopment project. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
Move to take this item out of order.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Little, would you like to?
Sure. Staff is recommending that we retain Vandewall for assistance with the planning of the riverfront Park Plaza, because they've been involved with this project essentially from the beginning. And they would essentially partner with Strand for the engineering services. This is only meant to get us to a conceptual level, not a full engineering plan, that would be at a later stage. And it's written to make sure that we would meet all the requirements of the build grant by having Strand as a subcontractor to Vandewall, because Vandewall is considered a pre-qualified contractor according to Dane County. That's something that is one of the requirements. Also, incidentally, we have on the agenda a little later, an ad hoc planning committee to go along with getting this project going, so...
Alder Moore?
I understand that these guys have been involved with the development of ER Commons from the beginning. I guess my question would be what the bandwidth is, since I didn't get a chance to do a lot of research, specifically as it relates to parks as opposed to other pieces of development or other pieces of infrastructure. I mean, these guys, have they done a lot of, with parks and with urban spaces?
Yeah, they're very widely known. In fact, they've partnered with Strand, if you want to look it up on the internet, they just recently completed a big riverfront project, kind of similar to this with Janesville, for the city of Janesville. So it's kind of a similar model that they followed there. So they have worked together in the past, and Jake, Sonya and I met with Josh from Strand. You know, we did have another firm that we did take a look at that would be also involved with this project, but, you know, the recommendation was to go, to stay with Vandewall essentially.
Vandewall does have a park there, is that correct?
Yes, I mean, they are a planning firm, that is, they're not an engineering firm, which is the reason why we would need to partner them with Strand. Because when we get into, you know, if we do some things with the water, there'll be permitting issues and things that will come up as well.
Right, yeah. Just wanted to make sure we get somebody that has some real vision, particularly around park space, so...
Well, I'm hoping the steering committee can help with the vision part.
Oh, for sure. And we'd like to get this planning process going, because we, the developer would like to have a plan to show, you know, potential businesses who are interested in moving into the parks, so... Alder Spade?
I am trying to remember the firm that had managed the rebuilding of the Schluter Park and the road out in front of it, putting in, was that Vandewall, or was that a different?
That was Grebacher.
Okay, thank you, right, okay. Yep, never mind, I just wanted to make sure that...
We're not going down the same path.
No, 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 and a clarification, clarification. I think they were the engineering on that one, so, but yeah, yeah, we didn't look at them.
Okay, yep.
Any other questions? Comments? Alder Holmquist sent them something to say about this. No. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item H, reports of committees, commissions, boards, mayor, city administrator, city attorney, and department managers. Alder Kur?
We have media committee on Thursday.
Alder Spade?
The Sustainability Committee will meet on Thursday, and I hope I don't regret not asking to take tonight's ordinance out of order. Hopefully, we'll have a forum.
Alder Wood?
Landmarks meets on Wednesday.
Alder Kitzler?
Nothing to report.
Alder Morton?
Nothing to report.
City Clerk Andrews?
Work has begun on the elections, 2018 elections. Coming up in December, there'll be the recertification of all of the election inspectors. And then the Republican Party of Dane County has contacted clerks across the state for lists of their election inspectors, so that they can possibly recommend that some of their, some of them will be republic, you know, declare their party and work on a partisan basis. We haven't had a lot of those types of election inspectors, but it could happen. And then just also working on a couple of things that'll be bringing, one thing here, so about meeting time and, also that soon we will, we are looking at not providing notary service to residents, and if that does come to fruition, that'll be announced a lot, where the liability doesn't seem to weigh, the benefit doesn't balance. So just things that we're working on in the clerk department.
City Administrator Little?
Gee, I don't have much to report. Just trying to get caught up from vacation, okay?
So nothing?
No, I wouldn't say anything.
Okay. I think if anyone has further amendments to the operating budget, the sooner you can get them to mark, the better. I think it'd be good, certainly if we had them prior to the night of the meeting, so that everybody can be thinking about them. And then I just wanted to talk a little bit about process. We've had several different things come up where council have asked staff to spend some time putting together information for them for various policy changes and things. And some of those I've known about, some I haven't, and I think April doesn't always know about them. So if we could ask you to please touch base with April first, when you plan to ask the staff for something like that, just so she can keep a handle on everything everybody's doing and make sure it's fitting in with everything else they're doing, so... I guess the only remaining thing we have is appointments, first of all, to the Facilities Committee. These are two reappointments, Jim Byer, they were not, they should have been reappointed a year or two ago on warrant. Jim Byer, effective immediately through May 2020, and Jim Lampy, effective immediately through May 2019. Then to the Riverfront Park Plaza Ad hoc Steering Committee, this will be effective immediately. Nancy Moore, Andrew Kitzler, Jeff Hens, Rob Stein, and Chris Hornberg. Is there a motion to approve?
So move to...
Second?
Who was the second?
Nobody yet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Both of you were, you had the second, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Appointments are approved. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, and now you can go watch the Packer game.